All right, good evening, everybody. Good evening, hello and welcome to the Anacortes City Council meeting of July 7th, 2025. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Mr. Franciac, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Fantini.
Here.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mr. Walters.
Here.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Here.
Ms. Moulton.
Here.
Mr. McDougal.
Here.
Ms. Hubick.
Here.
Thank you.
Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first up is some announcements, and well, we'll have announcements. I've got a couple of quick announcements. I'd like to thank Public Works, Parks, Police for the tremendous Fourth of July Parade on Friday, thousands of folks there, and thanks for keeping it safe and organized. Special thank you to Sylvia and Darby for the coordination, the hard work, organized the floats, worked the grand marshal, which we tried a new way this year, and had Eric Johnson, so thank him for former councilmate and for serving as grand marshal. Thank you also to Miles for the drone work, taking the town photo. And I will hold off till a little bit later to announce the winners, if you haven't heard already, for the best marching group and best float. Also, Commercial Avenue Project Phase One begins today, so that's the modernization of the intersection. No, it will not be roundabout. The modernization of the intersection between 11th and 13th Street of Commercial, I refer to as the Safeway Intersection, will be open during construction, but will have reduced driving lanes again between 11th and 13th Street, alternate routes to downtown businesses, and the state ferry terminal will be signed, and alternate route maps available online. So that's coming shortly, but again, you should be able to drive through the intersection. Kids are Best this Saturday, the 12th, at Storvik Park. So this event is free and provides entertainment, games, and activities for the whole family. Also, you may have noticed new signs on Highway 20 announcing Anacortes as a Washington Creative District, so creative districts are designed by Washington State's Arts Commission and support communities such as Anacortes that are rich in arts and culture. And then finally, my final announcement, Councilmember TJ Fantini was elected to the Association of Washington City's Board of Directors. So Councilmember Fantini will represent District 14, which includes San Juan, Skagit, and Watcom Counties, so congrats, Mr. Fantini. All right, we are going to do one of my favorite things to do, and that's swearing in some police officers. So with that, I'll have Chief Floyd come up and introduce, and then I'll administer a couple oaths.
Good evening, Mayor Miller, members of council, and members of the audience in attendance. It's my pleasure tonight to introduce to you our newest officer, Officer Mitchell Boprey. Officer Boprey was born and raised in Minnesota, in a suburb just south of Minneapolis. He served nine years in the U.S. Navy, achieving the rank of Petty Officer Second Class. Officer Boprey left the Navy in 2023 and served the City of Marysville Police Department for two years before joining the Anacortes Police Department. During our background investigation, Officer Boprey received high praise from supervisors and coworkers at the Marysville Police Department, and we feel extremely lucky to have him join the Anacortes Police Department. Joining us tonight to witness Officer Boprey's oath of office are his lovely wife Erin, his daughter Penelope, and his son Wesley. Mayor Miller, will you now administer the oath of office to Officer Boprey?
With pleasure, I will administer the oath. And I already warned him I will not swear him into the Navy. All right, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Mitchell Boprey.
I, Mitchell Boprey.
Being first duly sworn on oath.
Being first duly sworn on oath.
Depose and say.
Depose and say.
I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
The ordinances of the City of Anacortes.
The ordinances of the City of Anacortes.
And faithfully and impartially.
Faithfully and impartially.
Perform my duties as officer.
Perform my duties as officer.
For the City of Anacortes Police Department.
For the City of Anacortes Police Department.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Well done. You got it. Okay, well, good. There you go. Yeah. Get all the pictures you want. All right, now we'll get in here and ruin the picture. Yeah, you're done. Yeah, one more picture, even though I said I'd ruin it. Congrats. You can go ahead and say hi to all the council members. All right, one more time for Officer Boprey. This next swearing in will be a little more, it could be interesting.
Chief? It's also my pleasure tonight to introduce to you our newest Police Canine Officer, as promised several weeks ago when he started his training. And to give you a short bit of information on Canine Zeke, I have Sergeant Clifford as our Canine Coordinator that has just a couple of facts and interesting things to offer about Zeke, and then we'll bring him in to introduce him to the council members and audience.
All right. Can you hear me? All right. Mayor, council, members of the public, both in person and virtually, we're pleased to announce the addition of Canine Zeke to our Anacortes Police Department team. Canine Zeke is a two-and-a-half-year-old German Shepherd, and he comes to us from Europe and was obtained from a vendor in California. Officer Tyler Hatcher, who I'm sure many of you have met before in the past, is Canine Zeke's handler. Canine Zeke replaces Canine T-Bone, who retired in January 2025 after over nine years of service with the Anacortes Police Department. Canine T-Bone was a single-purpose canine trained in narcotics detection, with the ability to detect the odors of methamphetamine, heroin, cocaine ecstasy, and later fentanyl. Canine T-Bone made an indelible impact on the City of Anacortes and surrounding communities and was deployed 1,275 times. Eight hundred and thirty-one of these deployments was for our agency, 378 were for other law enforcement agencies, and 66 were for the Drug Task Force. During his time in service, Canine T-Bone contributed to the seizure over 1,037 pounds of methamphetamine, 24 pounds of heroin, 216 pounds of cocaine, and 58 grams of ecstasy. Since our agency started tracking fentanyl seizures in 2023, T-Bone contributed to the seizure over 29 pounds of fentanyl powder and 55 pounds of pills suspected to contain this substance. Notably, each pound of fentanyl contains over 95,000 lethal doses, over five times the population of Anacortes per DEA statistics. Canine T-Bone was also very active with the community, having been involved in 56 formal demonstrations showcasing his ability to detect the odor of narcotics to various community groups, and numerous informal demonstrations and contacts with community members. He even had 2,200 followers on Instagram. The major difference between Canine T-Bone and Canine Zeke is while Canine T-Bone was a single-purpose canine with a sole emphasis in narcotics detection, Canine Zeke is a dual-purpose canine. Canine Zeke is trained both in narcotics detection and patrol functions. The unique characteristics of Anacortes, which include city parks covering thousands of acres with miles of trails, large wooded areas such as the Anacortes Community Forestlands, marinas with large docks, and expansive residential areas, pose challenges to locating and apprehending fleeing suspects. Canine Zeke's patrol training would greatly expand our capabilities in this area. Canine Zeke will be able to track or locate fleeing suspects, backtrack from the location of a fleeing suspect, which may be beneficial in efforts to locate property or evidence that was dropped or hidden, search for potential evidence associated to a person who was fled to include dangerous items like firearms or drugs, and search particular areas or buildings for suspects who are hiding. Canine Zeke's tracking capabilities will allow officers to create space and engage in de-escalation techniques as appropriate, improving safety for officers and suspects alike. Additionally, the presence of Canine Zeke can increase the likelihood of successful de-escalation by serving as a deterrent to a suspect's flight or resistance. When needed, Canine Zeke can also serve as an additional less-than-lethal use-of-force option if presence alone is not enough to successfully de-escalate a situation and other methods have failed, but notably, canines are very rarely used as direct use-of-force tools. Canine Zeke successfully completed 400 hours of patrol training and 200 hours of narcotics detection training, and was certified in these areas by the Washington State Police Canine Association and under the Washington Administrative Code. Canine Zeke is now available for deployment to support law enforcement efforts in Anacortes and other communities. Our Canine program is committed to serving our community through the utilization of Canine Zeke's improved capabilities, along with continued public outreach efforts. So without further ado, I'll turn the stage over to Officer Hatcher, who I'm sure you've been waiting for, to introduce Canine Zeke over to you and the community.
All right. So I've had the pleasure of riding along with Officer Hatcher and T-Bone, but we'll see if I can administer the oath to Zeke. I don't expect him to repeat it, but we'll give it a try. I'll raise my hand very slowly. I, Zeke, being first duly sworn on oath, depose and say, I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States of America, the State of Washington, and the City of Anacortes. I further affirm that I will protect and serve the citizens of Anacortes by assisting my handler to enforce laws, be a goodwill ambassador for the Anacortes Police Department, and faithfully perform my duties as Canine for the City of Anacortes Police Department. Very good. Well done. And Zeke will be signing his oath out in the hallway, probably, so we don't get ink all over the place.
Thank you.
All right, good times. Thank you very much. To everybody in the Anacortes Police Department, thank you for everything you do keeping us safe. All right, we are on to Item C, which is Fourth of July Parade Award Winners. So if you didn't know, best marching group, third place, Oars, second place, Twisted Pixies, first place, Cabal Gantes Del Northwest Horses, so first place. Best, yeah, there we go. Probably at next council meeting, we'll give them a hearty handshake and a nice ribbon and a plaque, so. Best float, third place Sailor Sea School and Merman of Anacortes. Second place Azusa Garden, and first place for best float, for the fourth year in a row, I believe, Anacortes Rotary Club. All right, we are on to committee reports. First up I have is Fiber Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. McDougal.
Yes, Fiber Committee met last week. Fairly short meeting. We ran through quickly through the numbers. We are just shy of 2,700, I guess, customers on net, that includes residential and business. And we have, actually, we're approaching the 4,100 number mark as far as signups for the service. So that means we're essentially approaching 54% market share, which is fantastic. The department has done kind of an updated, they've got a running sort of set of projections for the next three years as far as financials, and updated projections. Basically, we're still doing a lot of network construction this year, and that's like the vast majority of it will be wrapped up by the end of the year. And the projection is we're basically going to draw about a million from general fund by the end of this year. By the end of next year, the draw is about 300,000, and then in 2027, the projection is a net profit of about 175,000. And then every year after that, we expect that net profit number to increase as more users come online and, you know, costs of construction go down to next to zero, essentially. Other quick updates, there was an outage June 6th and 7th. We did a debrief on that. The department had done a significant dive into and root cause analysis. Basically, there was this strange misconfiguration that in one of the OLTs. We expect this, it's kind of a one-time thing. It took actually quite a while to find, there was a loop in configuration, and we don't expect that, like, it's a one-time thing, we don't expect it to repeat or anything. The only other thing I had was they've released, the department's released an updated coverage map. So if you go to the city's website, the access Anacortes website, you see a whole lot of green where basically the EDA geography is now all filled in, service is available. The team is still working to, you know, complete installations, but we, basically, the department covers now, I don't know, probably 80, 90% of addresses within the city, so that's what I have. Thank you.
Questions on the Fiber Report? Okay, next up is Housing Affordability and Community Services Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
The Housing Affordability Committee met last Wednesday. We had some briefing, and we also briefed the Able Housing Group. As you might recall, the council issued a letter of support for their grant application a couple months ago. They haven't submitted that grant application yet, but they will be doing so shortly. They're very hopeful that they get at least some money through that process. When we issued that letter of support for Able Housing, we also did one for the Anacortes Housing Authority. They did get their grant from the county of the 0.09 grant funds that are dedicated to housing. Also, with respect to Able Housing, they are working on building a couple of ADUs behind one property that one of their members purchased, so they really have gotten on the ground with some housing, at least for a member or two of the adult-disabled population. And out of our discussion with them, they suggested that their disabled adults, who will be living in this permanently affordable, permanently dedicated housing for disabled adults, don't require parking spaces, and suggested that we might amend our code to reduce the parking, or eliminate the parking requirement for adult-disabled occupants. We also heard a pitch from the school district for support for, I think, what is essentially a community service worker in the schools. And we talked a little bit about a pitch from Salvation Army for support for their cold-weather shelter. They believe that they can make cold-weather shelter happen for the people that need it in our community for about $10,000 a year, and we are shortly going to have $20,000 freed up from our CDBG funds through revision of the CDB action plan to make the admin dollars part of the CDBG instead of general fund. And then finally, we talked about the possibility of the Anacortes Housing Authority applying for a connecting housing to infrastructure grant, CHIP grant, for the Olson Building. That is something that would pay for their sewer, stormwater, either impact fees or physical construction of those improvements. Importantly, the city would need to be the applicant, but the idea here is that the AHA would do the work of preparing that grant, so they were going to be looking into that and see if it was a match for them and whether they would likely be eligible. Thank you.
Questions or additions? Okay, next up is the Library Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini.
We're actually meeting later this month.
Okay. Public Safety Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Hubick.
Thank you. We met on July 1st, had a very quick meeting, touched on staffing. As you've seen, we've got one of the new five levee positions hired and sworn in. They are working on Positions 2 and 3. They anticipate two people scheduled to graduate the academy at the end of July for police, and then two more folks should have their background checks finished soon. And then on the EMS Fire side, there is one opening left from the eight levee positions. There are going to be other openings coming up. There are retirements, there's going to be some family leave coming up, and then along that come more cost and overtime, so we do anticipate that there will be a third-quarter budget amendment coming up soon. They also discussed a need for more training for EMS. There'll be a training budget that'll be submitted, you know, at the end of every year to plan for the next year, so we will probably see and discuss an increase in that over the next several months. EMS Fire have also been working on a safer grant, which is federal money. The team have applied before but haven't actually gotten the funding for it, so the hope is that with that money, we can hire three more firefighters, and this would be able to shift the staffing hours to 12. EMS levee funds in 2025 have gone to capital, and now the focus is in salaries. That's it.
Questions, Public Safety? All right, Public Works Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
The Public Works Committee met at 5:00 PM today. It was councilmembers Young, Walters, and myself, and engineer Logan Lee and Public Works Director Andy Rayum. We talked about the streetscape contract that's on the agenda for this evening and delved into that a little bit, and we also talked about the structure of the Traffic Safety Committee, how it is currently, and if there are ways that we would like to change it. So how it currently happens is that staff will bring questions that people raise to staff, which usually have to do with parking and speeding. Those are the two main categories. And the Public Works Committee will review those and see the staff recommendations, and then those eventually come to council. So the conversation was just begun tonight of, should we do it differently? Should all those recommendations go out in a memo to council, and then do we discuss them all at council, which could be a little cumbersome, but there will be further discussion on that, and we'll bring that to council, because all those decisions do come to council. But we talked about how it is helpful to have staff not only give their notes about how they came to the conclusions that they did, we also do have a traffic engineer on call specifically for things like this, and so they're usually very, well, they're always very well-informed decisions, but anyway, going to think going forward, the best way to do this, and the Traffic Safety Committee has had different incarnations over the years, and maybe it'll have a new one, so we'll be bringing more back on that. We also talked about parking on 6th and 7th Streets between M. Avenue and O. Avenue, where the streets are quite narrow and there's not room for parking on both sides, and recommending that there will only be parking on the north side and not on the south side. And also, then, M. and N. themselves, during the narrow parts, there would be no parking on the west side, so that will also be coming to council. It's just not, the road's just simply not wide enough, and a traffic engineer was consulted to see what made the most sense there. So, yeah, so we'll be seeing that as a council, and that's, that is it. Thanks.
Public Works, questions? All right, next, Port City Liaison Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Thank you. We had a Port City meeting, I'm going to pull it up, on July 1st. We got kind of an update from the port, we welcomed the new director, and heard that the T. Bailey Project went well, which is fantastic news, heard a little bit about some of the projects that are going to be happening in the near future, had somewhat of an update about the EPA Clean Ports Grant that was received last year. It appears everything's moving forward. That's in partnership with about six private businesses, also the state ferry, or four private businesses plus the state ferry, and the port of Anacortes, while they are receiving some funding, the majority is going in coordination. They will be facilitating the grant, but will really be a boom for a number of businesses along the waterfront around all of Fidalgo Island, so that's really exciting. We talked a little bit about the event center, both just the final touches when it comes to the agreement for construction development moving forward, and then also how it would be managed moving forward. I think that we're just crossing the Ts and dotting the Is, at which point, in the next couple of weeks, we hopefully will do somewhat of a joint meeting, because we feel like that's a really important component, so that the public is able to hear from all of, all the commissioners and council members about the fact that we've been working extremely hard, not right now on the design of it. I know everyone would love to see some updated design, but really just the mechanics of how we will be able to construct it, addressing any issues that might be, that will come up in the future, and then also what our expectations are for how the port manages it moving forward. And we're trying to get through as many of those unknowns as possible. Once those are kind of done with outside counsel from both entities, we should be able to meet together and kind of move forward in a unified manner. Because of that, we did talk a little bit about some of the requirements for boundary line adjustments, that intersection there is pretty complicated, and just making sure that both entities, the port and the city, are on the same page about what necessary steps are going to be required moving forward. That is about all we, all we discussed.
Any questions for Port City Liaison?
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Just a quick one. Could you do a very brief description of the T. Bailey Project?
Go ahead.
So I always want to be really careful, because I'm not on, I'm not a port commissioner, and I think we've been, tried to be careful about what, how much we share when we're not the firsthand knowledge people, but they, I will, so, take it with a grain of salt, but they did, they successfully barged those project tanks that were in pieces and used our heavy haul route through the middle of the night. Then they were put on the pier where Dakota Creek is and Transpac, they all were able to play in the sandbox together, and then they were, they assembled the pieces into these large pipe tanks, and then those tanks were then put on a barge and barged to Alaska after one more stop for a little bit more provisioning. So it was the first time that T. Bailey had utilized kind of our deep-water access, so that was really exciting. It appears it went smoothly for all the groups involved, and it, and chances are, there is another project that will happen in the near future. So great work with Public Works. We had to do some, some quick changing of code so that they could do that, get that done, and the port, so, yeah, that's, without giving too much detail, that's inaccurate. There you go.
All right. Any other announcements or committee reports I may have missed?
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Hubick.
Economic Development.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I did miss that, so you even know it's written on the page. Economic Development Committee, Ms. Hubick.
Well, July 1st was a busy day, because that was also the day that we met. It was Councilmember McDougal and myself, along with Mr. Coleman and Ms. Snyder. We also discussed the CHIP grant program being offered through the State Department of Commerce. One of the things that that grant program focuses on is workforce housing and affordable housing, anything below 80% AMI to at least 25% of the residents. We were just kind of brainstorming to see if there was anything coming up that could be applicable for it. The Housing Authority was mentioned, and then we just had a brief discussion about ADUs, if there's anything that we could do to stimulate implementation, adaptation, anything that could be done to make things easier. There was discussion that was had previously about plans that are pre-approved. Well, it turns out that the bottleneck around getting ADUs actually on property has very little to do with the plans themselves. Usually, it's land usage, and being an island that's very close to fresh, or estuaries and very sensitive environments, we want to make sure that the land use is used in the correct way. So we have no concerns about the holdups that are happening, because they're being done with the environment in mind. And that was pretty much it. We'll be meeting again tomorrow.
All right, questions, Economic Development? All right, now, anything else I may have missed that's not written down on the agenda? All right, now, anything else I may have missed that's not written down on the agenda? Okay, we will go on to item four, which is public comment. Opportunity for any member of the public to address the council on anything that is, well, on anything that's not on our agenda, but we have a couple of folks that are signed up for, on an agenda item, so you can either go now or later. But I'll go right down the list and you sign up, you get to go first. And I have Pat Gardner signed up first. Topic is Fourth Parade and Dog Poop. And you know, you know the drill. State your name and city, please.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm Pat Gardner, Anacortes. First of all, the weather for the parade was lovely. It was really nice. Being in the parade as I was, I didn't get to see all the fun things that went on, but it was well worth it. My concern in what I read, that candy was not to be thrown out to the children, not just thrown into the street. Well, I don't think it was known and it happened. I had a bag, my little bag of Tootsie Rolls, pop, or Tootsie Rolls that I was passing out. I only passed them out to adults. And the reason why is there were children, and I passed them out to adults that I knew. I know, I've recognized a lot of people I knew, and other adults. And I passed them out. And when I got home that night and the next day, I got emails and calls saying thank you because they tried to get the candy. The kids were grabbing it before they had a chance. Now, so, but anyway, the kids, the children, there's no control. They're getting out into the street and the parents aren't controlling them. I don't blame the children because there's no perennial control with the kids running into the street and everything. It's been brought to my attention, there's a lot of us seniors around here, people that would be happy to wear pink or yellow jackets or vests, whatever, and be two per block on each side to maintain the distance, keeping them behind that white line and controlling it. Because the parents sure don't seem to have much control. So, and for safety reasons, I know some of the kids were out actually into the traffic line for some of their vehicles. I didn't see it because I was in the parade. But I think something, some control needs to be done. I think candy's a nice thing. I've been in, been a place where it's totally forbidden because of those issues. So I don't think the vendors that were in the parade were, told their people they shouldn't throw it out. And so again, the adults that I gave to were very happy. So on another subject, today I did a port walk with a commissioner, with a group of us, and we came down the east side of Commercial at the end of the day. And I, we saw huge piles of poopy along the sidewalk on Commercial. And it wasn't fresh. It'd been unfortunately probably stepped on. And there were some by the tree stumps and things, but there was quite a bit. I know we have the poopy bag holders around by the port there. And they're not very pretty. I don't want to go over my time. They're not very pretty, but it might be helpful to have maybe a couple along Commercial because somebody's walking their dog and they forgot the poop bag or whatever it is. But something, because these are little ones. These were big. And so I just wanted to bring that to your attention and I hope you adhere to what I said about the parade. There are volunteers that would be happy to help out. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. And yeah, every year, we, every other year, probably we remind folks not to throw candy and then, but we appreciate the, the input on that. It's always fairly nerve-wracking when tracked military vehicles and kids and candy in the same place. So we will definitely take that on board and it is against the, our, our city codes and ordinances to not clean up after your pets. So please clean up after your pet. But I know, no, it's not applied to anybody in this room. Okay, next up, I have Ward McKenzie, streetscape contract. You're gonna, okay. And then I have Brian Benson, pickleball court proposal. And you, yeah, it sounds like you're ready to go now. So let's go.
Yeah, hello, city council. My name's Brian Benson. I'm the coach of the Anacortes High School Boys Tennis Team. And I'd like to comment about the parks proposal to resurface and put lines in for dual-use tennis pickleball courts in the southernmost to tennis courts of the high school tennis courts there. I don't think this is a good idea. I know I've emailed you some, about this already. First of all, the, the lines would be confusing. None of the other conference teams have pickleball court lines on their courts and probably some of the coaches would refuse to play in those two courts. So the resurfacing would not really benefit us very much. The other thing about it is that the, the courts were put in six or seven years ago without very good drainage. And so all the courts have started to crack. And if you just, if you just resurface those southern courts, they're gonna crack again. And you're gonna have a waste of money there, I think. They're gonna crack pretty quickly. Anyway, that's my two cents on that subject. Thanks for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your input. Next up, Andy, I think it's Pitts, if I'm reading it correctly, but that's why you have to state your name to make sure we get it right for the record. And the topic is pickleball.
Pickleball. So my name's Andy Pitts.
And a little closer to the microphone to make sure the green lights.
I've been a longtime resident of Anacortes and I have concerns about this pickleball situation also. First of all, what Brian said about the tennis courts, they were never built right in the first place. So what we're proposing to do is put $70,000 into just resurfacing the two farther-staying courts. The courts aren't level and when we get done, they're not going to be level. So what we're doing is substandard on top of substandard. We're not gonna fix it. We're just going to leave them the way they are. And if you go look at them now, there's a five-degree slope on those courts right now besides the checks and the cracks in them. So to me, this is just a waste of money. You know, if we're not gonna do this right, why are we doing it? Okay, there's another thing here is I had a conversation with the Parks Department Director and he's been wonderful in talking to him and giving me information. And it seems that this is being driven by the fact that you have a lot of noise complaints that are up there on the Clear Ridge site. And then you, Park Department did try and resolve this issue by putting up some anti-noise netting, but it didn't achieve the desired result. And then the Parks Director mentioned that he's been by the, you know, the tennis courts a number of times and seen that the tennis courts are not being used. And so that seems to be a justification to say, well, let's, you know, repurpose these courts. And that's kind of a, you know, it's true what he said, but it's kind of a false argument in that you could look at any sports facility in this town and how often are they used? I live next to Asa Harts Creek Park. It's used three months a year, that baseball field. Look at any soccer field. Look at Downey at Alton R. Daniels. I mean, that argument doesn't hold a lot of water unless you're specifically using that argument to get to your desired result. So then that got me to thinking about, okay, so if the tennis courts aren't being used that much, well, how much are the courts up at Clear Ridge being used? And so since the 30th of May, all the way up to today, and I was up there twice today, I've gone by there 20 times. And two times I found the courts had three of the four courts being used. Two times I found the courts had two courts being used. And 16 times I found that the courts had one court being used. So we're not even approaching 50% capacity of the courts we have, but yet we're saying we need more pickleball courts. Okay? So I would challenge the Park Department to give us the data that they have accumulated to justify, we're gonna spend this $70,000 to do this. And then there's one other consideration that comes with this is tennis and pickleball don't really belong side by side because tennis is a game that's played quietly where pickleball is a game due to the unique nature of the noise of the plastic paddle and the plastic ball hitting. It's kind of a clacking sound. It's not a regular sound. It's not like when you first hear a lawnmower start up and, you know, then you hear it and then it kind of blends into the background. This is a noise that's irregular. It's distracting. It's distinct. Okay? When you play tennis, you're trying to chase down a ball that's moving at anywhere from 10 miles an hour to 70 miles an hour, depending on the caliber of the player. At the time, you're moving sideways, forwards, backwards, trying to figure out where this ball's gonna hit, get there and hit the ball. And so the noise of pickleball is very distracting to a tennis player. There's one other thing that you should also consider here is that we've tried up here at Clear Ridge to resolve this noise problem and it didn't work. But now we're gonna take this noise problem and take it down to the middle school courts. We're gonna affect the tennis players, but also how much are you gonna affect those houses that are there? It's like we're conducting an experiment to try and get more pickleball and yet we haven't thought all the ramifications of this through. And it's kind of frustrating at the way this has come about. This came about, I highly found about this through, it was a blurb in the paper about what's going on with the school district. And then I called John and found it. But John was nice enough to, you know, explain to me what, you know, he knew. I tried calling the school district and athletic director would not return my phone calls. He would not return an email. I tried to get through and finally did get through to the administrative assistant, to the superintendent, and they knew nothing about it. And then when they got back to me, they made it sound like, oh, well, this is not gonna happen for, you know, a couple of months. And then next thing you know, bam, you guys had this meeting that got canceled with your last meeting and now it pops up on the agenda again today. So this whole process has been kind of flawed in the respect that, you know, we never asked the tennis community what they thought, which I was quite disappointed by the Park Department in that, especially once it was brought forth to them that, hey, there are concerns here and I think it's now up to you to ask the hard questions about this. Is this something that we really want to do? And there are some questions here. You're asking, you're talking about spending $70,000 to end up with not even a level tennis court. So anyway, thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you for your input. Appreciate it. Next, I have Bashi Morris and the topic is Gwemas Ferry.
Thank you, Bashi Morris. I live in Old Town. I've got some papers I would like to hand out to the council, if I may.
Sure, you can just give them to Ms. Schu and then she can distribute them.
You may not know, but the electric ferry was first sort of idea hatched in at least 2013, if not sooner. And last year, the bids that were brought into the county were refused. I did go over to the island in the rain last year, about March, in order to listen to the presentation from the county of what their plan had been and including the upland improvements. Many of these improvements are just gonna do exactly what the resident parking only on Sixth Street did. It just pushes it further and further into the neighborhood. In those pictures, you will see there's a car parked at Sixth and I, 10 feet from the stop sign. There's two crosswalks there. And it has gone on day and night. There are other pictures of people parking very creatively, diagonally. The entire block on the south side of Seventh Street from I to J. This impeded people, you know, using the sidewalk. There are pictures of trucks with their trailer hitches across the sidewalk, the hood of their car and their tires. We've not had a lot of compliance with the police department that does the ticketing. Part of the difficulty there is that most people that do this are in a hurry and they go to work in the morning. And so at 8 o'clock in the morning, their cars may be gone. But right now, they're still there. And I remember coming and talking to you folks in April. I had been to a safety committee meeting with the police chief, the fire chief, Ms. McCleland McGrath, and Mayor Miller. And then I spoke the next week and it is an ongoing difficulty. We have substandard streets in parts of Old Town without gutters, without curbs. Our sidewalks were put in probably when Amos Bowman was here. We need help and we need it now because the upland improvements are going to remove up to 26 parking places down at the ferry. The prices of the ferry tickets have gone up radically and this is not something that's going to change. I just hope that all of you that I suggested might want to take a trip down to my neighborhood on Seventh Street did so. And if not, I don't know why. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, actually, I don't have anybody else signed up who signed up in advance. I know Mr. McKenzie, you're gonna wait until the topic comes up. Anybody else want to address the council, anything not on our agenda? Okay, we will move on to our consent agenda, items 5A through D. Council.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
I move reapprove the consent agenda items A, B, C, and D.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Young and second by Mr. McDougal to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. On to item number six, which is other business. First item of other business is item 6A, interlocal agreement with the Anacortes School District for tennis court upgrades and pickleball conversion at 22nd Street and K Avenue. Mr. Lunsford, you're already set to go.
Mayor Miller, council members, ladies and gentlemen. So thank you. I'll introduce the topic and do some explaining along the way and answer any questions that you might have, I hope. So we have been meeting with the school district since winter, talking with their staff about how we might do this resurfacing, if it was in their interest, if it would meet their needs, and then what we might do. So we met on site with Andy Wilkin, who's no longer on staff, and talked with Mike Sullivan and, who's also no longer on staff. And we brought this idea of could we have an agreement to resurface the courts? So Parks and Recreation has worked collaboratively with the school district. Maybe this will be the third time at the resurfacing, back when Mr. Ergenthaler was the AD and, and subsequent eighties to help them patch the tennis courts, using city money to do that, to allow play to continue at tennis courts because our community members go there for recreation. We only have currently one tennis court in city limits at, out by the airport at those tennis courts. So we've worked collaboratively on this process before and this is a continuation of that. So we met with them to see what they would like to do and how we might address it. What we're talking about, I know you like a good map, so I tried to bring a half-good map. The red square is the courts we're talking about specifically tonight. You can see they're located at 22nd Street, running east-west on Ariel and K Avenue, running north-south. So we met with their staff and talked to them about some of the problems and some of the issues. Would that work for them to resurface these courts? The answer was yes. How could we address some of the drainage issues? Because it was apparent when we met in the winter that drainage is a problem. See where my cursor is on the map there? There's a culvert in that area that tries to drain the hillside. And so it drains it out to the north and then the city has systems that run through here. So we talked to Andy at the time, Andy Wilkin, with the district about trying to help them clear these lines as best as possible and to work collaboratively to perhaps look at ways to either punch another line around here to help with drainage and maybe scope some of the lines that ran here north-south to address some of the drainage. So we talked about that and they would appreciate that idea. So we talked to some of our city staff about the possibility in Public Works, how we could collaboratively do that. Then we talked to them about could we, what would work for them as far as WIAA, Washington Interscholastic Athletic Association rules? Were the rules prohibiting this for competitive play? And they didn't think there were and I reached out to the WIAA and they reached back that there were not rules prohibiting this. So whether or not they work or not, that's another question, but there was no prohibition for competitive play. So we looked at this concept here in general. So the courts run north-south, so you could have four courts. This is a This is a concept, this isn't exactly what we're going to do, but this is the concept that could do it. So, you could have, the tennis net would stay, and then, the courts would be on either side of that. And we would work with our friends at the Parks Foundation to bring in temporary nets that could be placed in a locker, say, down here, if you want to go back, down here in a locker, outside the field of play, and then, they could be used by pickleball players to set up pickleball, then taken down, and tennis could play. So, the color of the lines, we asked Mr. Wilkin, what would be the least impactful for the tennis team, and then, he spoke with athletic director and other school staff. So, kind of left it to them as, what would be the best color for them to use? And then, we brought the, one of the contractor used by Skagit County onsite, and asked them how they would do it, what they would recommend. That's how we talked about resurfacing and the striping. So, that's, we came up with the estimate around, I think it was around forty-five this year, plus, you know, we wanted to leave a contingency in there. And then, I spoke, as you know, we were going to bring this to you back in early June, and then, the school district reached out to me and asked me to pause it, and so, we did, at their request. And the reason for that, Dr. Irish explained, was because he wanted to have a fuller discussion and keep his direct, his board members fully informed. And so, he did that. He reached out to me before he departed for his other, his new job, and we agreed that I would bring it back today to you for conversation. So, there's a couple changes in what you have before you tonight and what we brought previously, and they are some of these things. So, we were going to try to install the courts this summer, but the district board does not meet until August, so the likelihood of them considering this and passing this, and then me executing a contract with them before fall tennis starts is extremely low. So, we talked with the district staff about not, about having the ILA with them, but not doing it until next spring after tennis was over in May. So, after the, at least athletes were done with, I believe it would be girls' tennis and the state girls' and boys' tennis matches. The city would pay up to seventy thousand. I bumped that up because I wanted to be, I didn't want to have to bring this to you again, you know, I figured that was a safe not-to-exceed number. I don't have an exact quote, because no one's going to give me a quote that's three hundred sixty, or three hundred and forty days out. Two coats, two courts would remain as you saw in that one image, and with four pickleball courts on top of them, with temporary netting. And then, play would be, the agreement with the school district was, we wanted, if we were going to give them the money, we want to guarantee the public could use the courts, except when the school was using them. So, during school hours, you could go and play pickleball, but not when they were having a P.E. class, or practices, or matches, or another special event that they were doing. They got first priority, but you could go play during school hours, so that would allow the public the chance to go do that. And then, we reached out to neighbors on the, pardon me, on the south end. We reached out to these four homes. The reason we did that is we went out with our decibel meter when we had some volunteers playing pickleball, and we took the readings, and they were the loudest around fourteen twenty-one and fourteen nineteen. And so, we wanted to reach out to those four neighbors and tell them what we were doing, and encourage them to contact me. So, I heard from fourteen twenty-one, I did not hear from any of the other neighbors. The readings out here on Twenty-Second Street were lower. We did not go up here, because as you know, this is sunken, and the noise was not as prevalent as it was back here on the decibel reader. So, that's what we've done. We had, like I said, we have a history of collaborating. I know that there's a lot of views from tennis players who don't want to see this. Those are very valid viewpoints. We have to find compromises where we can. This is the most affordable version of pickleball expansion that I can find, without building new courts. I would love to be able to do, find a really perfect solution, or a very, very good solution. This is a good solution, but pickleball, I mean, tennis courts crack, whether you're playing pickleball on them or not, and those ones could reuse resurfacing, not only for the pickleball players, if this goes forward, but for tennis players. So, we thought it was a good, it was a good enough win-win to get us where we want to go, for this amount of money, expand our court use. We do have indoor use that we facilitate with the school district at Mount Airy, and that's been great, and a lot of volunteers are a part of that and make that work. And so, we thought this would be another opportunity for people to do what they love. Pickleball's a very popular sport. If you see people playing it, they get out, they enjoyed it, they can, it's an easy entry sport. For someone who doesn't do racket sports, you know, you can go out and play quite easily, and it's a nice social activity for all ages. So, that's part of our mission and goal, that's why we're bringing it to you tonight. I am here if you have any questions.
All right, before I turn over to council for questions, I just want to make one clarifying question that I'm going to ask you. It's two courts, two tennis courts that would be converted to four pickleball courts, and the other, the other four tennis courts would remain as they are.
Thank you, Mayor, yeah, so that would be, that is right. So, the, in the square, the top, the northern four would be untouched. The bottom two, and the southern two would become both dual-use pickleball and tennis. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, council, questions?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
If you go back a slide to your list of bullet, yeah, bullet points for the agreement, is it not the case today that play is allowed for the public when the school isn't using it?
I don't know that for sure, but I wanted to clarify that with this ILA.
Sure.
I wanted to make sure that if we were giving money to expand the use, that we had a guarantee in writing.
Oh, for sure.
The public could do.
Yeah, I think that that, that makes sense, to ensure that there is an exchange here, otherwise, we would just be giving money to the school district, which would not, not really be okay. But I do think that that is also the status quo. I mean, it's been a number of years, but when I've played tennis up there, I've just gone up there. But it seems to me, from your illustration, that it will be kind of difficult to see the tennis court lines when the pickleball lines. I mean, you'll see all the lines, and it'll be kind of confusing. Is it, is it possible that it makes more sense just to convert them to pickleball and not retain tennis? Or, does the school district have a need to retain those courts as tennis?
Yeah, I think it makes sense to pickleball players, but not necessarily to tennis players. So, I think that the desire is to have as much tennis, have as much tennis opportunity at that facility as possible.
So, they need the six courts?
That's my understanding, yes, and we support that wholeheartedly. We'd like to do that.
Yeah, okay. And so, have you seen elsewhere where you've overlaid pickleball lines on the tennis courts, and not everybody gets confused?
So, that was, that's a great question. So, we asked that of the contractor, and so, we asked them to talk to district staff, like, how could you draw them back? Could you, you know, say if, say in this example, it's blue on blue, how could you do that, it would have the least impact on the tennis player? Because the pickleball is not competitive, it's recreational. So, how could you have the least impact on the competitive athletes in the high school and middle school level, so they could do what they want to do as part of their, you know, athletic sports? Pickleball, we think this could work, and we're certainly open to other conversations, but the contractor who's done this for Skagit County has done this in other places, so we, we trust their expertise.
So, they've done specifically this somewhere else?
They have done specifically this somewhere else.
And that works?
It has worked. I haven't polled the, all the users, but they believe it was a good solution.
What was the decibel level at that clump of houses that you measured?
Let's go there. So, when we, that's a great question. So, and that was, to be fair to everyone, that was about nine in the morning, so school busters were running, and those, you know, that's a loud noise. I didn't go back at Sunday morning, when it was no school, and, and take this reading, but we went here, it was about, around here, it was in the low sixties, where my cursor is, you know, and, and that was similar here. And then, but you, as soon as you got over here, because of, remember, this is a hill, it's not showing that, and it dropped considerably into the fifties. And then, over here, it was difficult to get a reading because of all the traffic that day. But it was, again, when we had a clear point, it was in the low sixties.
And you had a, you used a decibel meter?
We used our, the one on our phone, which we've used in the past with the decibel reader that we have from planning, and there's very similar readings.
Okay.
Our comparisons have been similar.
My principal concern with this whole arrangement has just been the city's experience at Clear Ridge, which I understand is really not a, it's not a sound volume problem, not so much a decibel problem. I mean, below a certain level, you, you really can't hear it, I suppose, but it's more the pitch, or the frequency, or the cadence of the noise.
Yeah, and to, right, no, those are great questions. To be fair to the neighbors out there, I think that some of the complaints are the, the, the sound of the back and forth, right, off the rackets. So, what the product that we use out there, dropped it by about ten decibels.
The blanket, the sound blanket, you mean?
Yeah, mm-hmm, yeah, mm-hmm. Pickle block, and, is the trade name. And so, but there's still sound from the courts, people celebrating and whooping and playing music and things like that, park use, and I think that that, that annoys the neighbors understandably. And so, we're talking to them about, you know, if, if you were to put in something like this, could you reduce hours out there somewhat? Give them a bit of a break. It's trying, trying to find a balance to help respond to that community and still provide the opportunity for people, because pickleball is popular, people love to play it, it's, like I said, it meets a lot of our goals, it brings people out to socialize, exercise, and enjoy the community.
What I'd heard from the Clear Ridge neighbors was specifically about the ball, not, not so much the celebration. But if the, is there any truth to the suggestion that we would reduce the use of pickleball at Clear Ridge if we added pickleball here?
You could look at that with the Parks Board. We'd talk about, if you had this, could you draw down the hours on specific days at Clear Ridge to encourage use here? So, for example, would you, could you close it at six P.M. out there instead of eight P.M. to encourage people to come here? Those are all options we would discuss with the Parks Board, if we had more options than just one.
Was that your intent, or, or the, is that divorced from the?
I don't have an intent right now.
Okay.
But those are, that would certainly be an option to discuss. Certainly, I think that's an intent of the neighbors in Clear Ridge, is for us to draw down the hours out there.
Yes, I would concur.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Van Tien.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Lunsford. This is such a fun problem for you to have to deal with, I'm sure. I get more emails and calls about the Clear Ridge courts being the representative for that area than just about any other issue in Anacortes. I have a couple of questions. So, yes, there's noise complaints, and I'm not too worried about the decibels, because I think regardless of the decibels, if people get trained on hearing that ping, 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 regardless of how loud it is, it's gonna, gonna annoy them, but I think this is a, a better area for that. But, there's a couple other issues that get raised by the folks in Clear Ridge, and I'm just wondering if we can address that. One is, it seems like people play past the posted hours frequently. So, question, would there be posted hours here, and if so, how would we enforce that?
Right, no, those are good questions. So, to back to your Clear Ridge question, so we have, we've talked to some of those neighbors, and so, in the month of, later in June, after school got out, I went out there three times, just in the evening. One, to just be there to see if anyone stayed, they had not the first time. The second time, I did go talk to some, some people that were there after hours. I knew all their parents, so it was, worked out really well. And then, the third time, there was complaint that people were there late, but they were really wrapping up and were actively walking off the court. I did miss a call over the holiday weekend from an individual that showed up at nine wanting to play. I think that a lot of the people who play there at Clear Ridge regularly want to respect the sign, because they respect the neighbors, they want to, they're, they're citizens that want to do what's right, and I think that, as we say often, we have rogue users in every recreational group that don't follow our rules, be they dogs, or trail users, or what have you. So, I think that, you know, we've encouraged them to give us a call, we, I know that Chief Floyd has encouraged them to call dispatch, if his people are not responding to an emergency, they'll go out, and they have responded. So, that's the way that we would continue to enforce. They can contact us, or they can reach the PD. If the PD is not otherwise engaged, then they respond.
I also struggle with this, because, you know, it's, they are the tennis courts, and I just wanted to be clear that, like, there is some issues around drainage and that, but there's not anything in this seventy thousand dollars that we're going to do to address drainage.
No, that would be, that would be part of our collaboration with the school district that we do on other facilities. You know, we work together on, on the ball fields down at Smiley's Bottom, we work together on other places and have for every decade that I've been here. So, we would, of course, consult with them on anything like that, but we have some expertise with drainage, and we have some ability to deal with that, so we would try to do that. I don't think it's going to solve the problem, because I think they'd have to be reconstructed. You know, the, the tennis advocates are right, those, those courts need a lot of love. We don't have the love they need to give them to do it all over again. So, there are some Band-Aids that you need to do, but a Band-Aid's better than bleeding, so we're trying to get them to the place where they can and, and continue to be used. It's not a perfect solution, that is absolutely true, but it's a good solution, and that's what we think we can offer.
I also feel like this would be easier for me to vote yes for if there was, kind of, to Mr. Walter's point, a plan to curtail a little bit of the usage up in Clear Ridge, especially because those are right, right on top of houses. And also, a, a thing that I struggle with too is, you know, we do have a really good boys' tennis team, girls' tennis team, and, and I guess my concern is, is we're taking these two courts, we're not taking, excuse me, we are adjusting these two courts in this plan, but like, I can imagine with as popular as pickleball is, they'll, they'll probably be filled up. Are we going to come back at some point in time and ask for another two courts to be? I just, I struggle with this, because I feel like it's, it looks confusing, and they're, they're, they're the tennis courts. If this were going to definitely do something to solve an issue, I would be all in favor of it, but I don't see it as being really a solution, and also, I see that it could create additional problems. So, that's, that's what I, what I struggle with.
Sure, those are, those are very valid points.
But I don't envy your position, because this is a tough, this is a tough one, so.
Again, this is a discussion item with possible action, and again, if you frame your questions for more action that the staff needs to do to try to get your, your opinion on this one, we can work that. Mr. Young.
Thank you. First of all, you know, I really want to commend you again, Mr. Lunsford, for the depth of due diligence you put into when you bring things before council, you really do. The decimal levels, the thought into it, the use of funds, the greatest use for the public. I do recognize what both of the gentlemen brought forward. I think that there've been letters, emails, I've read them and understand the need, and the focus has been really on ensuring that, you know, students and children in Anacortes really does do a superb job of putting students and kids first, you know, beyond other places. I'm impressed by that. I do, though, think that when we look at the future of gamemanship, exercise, when we look at the age groups that are playing pickleball, you look at people that are, you know, above fifty maybe, you know, even though I'm sort of reaching fifty again, but pickleball is a big game, and it's moving swiftly throughout the country, and there are people whom I never thought had that exercise part of them to play pickleball, but they do. So, in a city of our size, we do have to make some accommodations when it's not a gross injustice to other things. I think the gentleman said himself that, you know, the tennis courts aren't used as much as they could be, and I think that also creates an opportunity for sport that's growing and is everywhere, I mean, truly everywhere. I think that this, you know, speaking of Rock Ridge, you know, I, just the history of, of the conversations of Rock Ridge, the alerting to the problems that Rock Ridge is having, Clear Ridge, thank you, thank you for the correction, Clear Ridge is having in that the solutions that have been put forward, the money that's been put on the table. But in this case here, there are four courts that will remain for tennis, that's not really being used to the maximum, and then, we have a growing sport here in Anacortes that a lot of our seniors use, and it's just not enough. You know, so, I, I think this is a great use of space. You know, I think the unfortunate byproduct of taking over of, um, taking over spaces that were traditionally reserved for one thing or another. But the agreement allows the, the school district to have priority. So, you know, it meets that. And so if they're not fully being used and there's a demand for pickleball courts, I, I just honestly think that it's in the best interest of the largest group of people in Anacortes with a growing sport in order to try to figure out how do we make it work not only for the students in the district, but also for that growing sports. And I think that this does that. It really does. And, and so, you know, I'm, I, I just think that when we, as much as we don't necessarily want change and, um, a bit of inconvenience, but when we look at the space of a year and that time in the year and how much is really being used, I just think that with, with dollars being as difficult as they are, trying to maximize how do we best use those dollars for the greater good of our citizenry. We have a demand that's here. This court, um, you know, just seems like it's the right thing to do here in the right time, given the amount of money that we're gonna be doing. Yes, there are problems that we're gonna need to solve, but I've not found an instance whereas when there was a, a big problem that we've not as a city or even as a department or team of people tried to solve it and put our best foot forward. I just think pickleball is in high demand. And that as a city of our size, with the makeup that we do, it is just the right thing to do here in this instance. So, you know, recognizing the challenge, recognizing that the school district gets priority, and recognizing that there are some people that may not follow the rule. But there are methodologies that we can begin to deal with those people that don't follow the rule. We've been very civil. But it doesn't mean that we have to always act in accordance with that. We can get a little tougher until we, till maybe they have the epiphany. But in this case, I think this is the right thing to do. And so therefore I will be voting for it.
Thank you.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Thank you. Um, so just for a point of, point of interest, uh, you talked about the decibels being in level low 60s and kind of the closest area. What was the decibel level in Clear Ridge?
So I, uh, I didn't take a measurement, I failed to take a measurement prior to the installation of the, of the block that we put up. So when we went up, um, if you're close, uh, if you're familiar with Clear Ridge and you go on the basketball court in a windless days, which is not always easy, easy to find there, windless day, my, my readings were in the high 90s without the block.
And then after the block?
When I would go around to the block, it would be in the 60s to low 70s in that neighborhood and the, and the houses that were complaining. So that's where I noticed the decibel levels had, it had, it would have done what was advertised. It did it, it did not eliminate. And for some people that was still annoying without a doubt to give, you know, proper respect to their point of view. But that's what we measured on a windless day.
So that seems like this is a better location because the closest property neighbor is in the 60s versus 90s, correct?
Right. That would be, so that would, uh, would, uh, correct. So the measurement that we took on that one day, and I would probably want to go back, uh, on a, on a
Sunday.
Windless Sunday morning, right? Um, when things are quiet ostensibly and take a measurement then too to be fair in the comparisons. I mean, we, I need to point out that our partners at the Parks Foundation helped to fund entirely the work that we did at Clear Ridge. And if there was a need and the school district wanted to find ways to work on this, if it, if it went through and became a problem, the Parks Foundation has been a great partner throughout.
To put up the dampening?
If we, I mean, that was, that was a conversation I would have with them, certainly.
Sure. So I appreciate that. That's good information. And I think, and the council members prior to me have answered a lot of the questions. So I guess I go back to the fact that there are six courts for all of the middle school and the high school and Island View. I don't know if they're using it. But, um, you know, the district has built some really incredible facilities for a number of the sports teams. Um, and looking, full disclosure, I don't play pickleball or tennis. So I don't know all the details of how the, the, the material on the ground works. I play golf. So, you know, I need even more space. But I, I am very hesitant to move forward with this project, not because we're not, we're trying to find a solution. And I think you've, you've given us a really strong solution at a relatively affordable price point. But I'm not hearing from the fellow, um, school district stakeholders nor the, um, district, um, electeds that this is something they really want to do. And so just looking at the, um, updated version seems really complicated for my eyeballs and I've got pretty good vision. Um, I think it's important that once we go that direction, we, we can't really go back. I would like to see those tennis courts improved for tennis. I think that there's the, it's feasible to do, um, pickleball courts somewhere where they are just pickleball courts. I think there was a suggestion from one of the folks that contacted us or that I had a conversation with, you know, it, it's almost better inside, um, to dampen the sound further. I, I'm, I'm just not convinced right now, um, that we have enough buy-in from the district, the school district, that this is actually something that they're aware of and want to have happen. Cause there's not really any going back from this. So I, at this point, I'm not comfortable moving forward. In August, if they bring this up to their electeds and say, you know what, this is absolutely something we need and, and will make a difference, fine, let's talk about it since we're not gonna do it for another year anyway. But right now I just feel like we're, we are trying to solve a problem, but creating a number of un, unexpected repercussions. And, and I think that tennis for the middle school and high school, like that's a lifelong sport. I think that they should be respected enough to have that. So I do carry some weight when it comes to a tennis, the tennis coach being the only representative from the district saying like, hey, this is not helpful when we want to have matches. But I don't know what they're called, but when you have a number of tennis
It is a match.
What is it called?
A match or a tournament?
Match or tournaments, right? Like, yeah, that seems really confusing. And now the best, the best surface also has the worst line or the most challenging lines to follow when you're, you're playing competitively. So that's kind of where I'm at. I'm not necessarily a no, but I, I need to have, feel like that this is really a, a partnership that makes sense for all involved.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. McDougall.
Thank you. And I actually just had a couple of quick questions. The, the example of tennis courts and pickleball in Skagit County where it was combined, were the, the lines, the picture showed all white lines. Uh, were the lines in that, like, is there a significant difference in the line colors?
So to answer your first part of your point, I don't know that the contractor converted pickleball to tennis in Skagit County. The contractor has done this work, but I don't know exactly where they done it. They have experience doing it. They came to us as a surface, uh, surface healer.
Do they do different color lines?
Yeah, so exactly. So they could draw, what they talked about was drawing it back in, uh, you know, like I said, either a blue on blue. This is just an example. This isn't necessarily what would happen, right? So just to give you a concept to understand how the courts would be laid out.
Okay. Well, I know that, you know, basketball and volleyball very commonly share court space and they have very different lines, but they also use very, you know, different colors to create contrast. I also know that tennis courts have not traditionally been shared with other sports because there hasn't been one per se until pickleball. So I, presumably tennis players have grown up playing just with a, a set of lines, whereas basketball players grew up with navigating multiple. Beach volleyball, there's actually kits that serious players buy and they bring it out rather than, you know, use their feet to like carve lines in the sand. There's actually canvas sort of line kits that they can use and they, they set it out and they kind of spike them into the ground. Is there an equivalent for pickleball?
There, there have, I have seen some products where you can bring that out and put it out on a temporary basis. Yeah. I don't know how, well, they play. I don't, I don't, I'm not that knowledgeable of that game in that regard.
It'd be interesting to get a sense from the, the local playing community if that's a feasible option. Cause you mentioned lockers that would hold the pickleball nets and presumably like a line kit could also go there.
There might be some pickleball players behind me that might have some opinions.
I'd be interested to learn.
Yeah.
So we want some, I want to make sure council has all their questions and then I'll, I'll go to some public expertise. Since my expertise consists of I have played pickleball all of twice in my entire life and it was on a tennis court, which I played for many years in my life. And it seemed to be straightforward, but it's a lot of lines, sure. Okay.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. So kind of to Mr. McDougall's point, I would be curious if where this has been, been done elsewhere, what the results have been. Are tennis players still playing on those courts? Is it working? What went wrong? I always like examples from other places that have done it. My other question is maybe a little bit more granular. So there would be four additional nets for this court and they would be kept in a locker and someone would have access to those, someone would pay for those and then someone would be responsible for those. And then I'm just wondering what kind of conflict there is if they don't take them down or they're not put away or just kind of those, those sharing kind of multi-use things. And then how those are affixed to the ground. Is it like, or is there gonna be something for tennis players to then trip over? Okay. Um, so just sort of a little bit of the nuts and bolts of how, how this really would pan out and how it's, how it's doing in other places. I would like to know more about that.
I can get you that. So the pickleball nets that we've looked at are around, temporary ones about 180, under $200 apiece. So they just sit on the ground on the, on the court as laid out. You can kind of see here. So they would go at the halfway point, right about there. And then, uh, we would work, you know, that, that, my bad, they go in a little hash, right? Right there. That's a little bit better. So, uh, then we would have a locker system. We would probably work with our friends in the pickleball community that already play at Mount Erie. And then, um, we would go from there. And, you know, we have a very generous donor community that has donated everything from the Thompson Trail Repair twice to, uh, other, other amenities that people enjoy. So we would go out to them and ask for them to donate the four nets that we needed to do this and the locker.
Mayor Miller.
Let me go to Ms. Hubick, cause if you have anything to add and then I'll come back to you.
Yes, sir. Just real quick.
Okay.
First off, I want to thank you for the hard work that you've put on this, um, for everybody showing up. I also want to recognize what a very privileged conversation we're having. We've talked for 45 minutes about pickleball when other communities are actually dealing with things like gunshots. So I just, not, not to belittle anything right here, but to also recognize that like this, this is a privilege and this is meant to be fun. And this is one way that you've indicated the parks can actually fulfill part of your mission statement about keeping people healthy. This is about getting people out, about encouraging people to move their bodies, about bringing an opportunity for camaraderie and socialness. Because you're, you're right. Like a lot of people do pickleball as a social aspect. And honestly, if that keeps two or three people from drunk driving, then that's a great thing too, right? But I don't feel like I'm hearing a lot of buy-in from either side of the community on this. I appreciate what Mr. McDougall mentioned about maybe something temporary. I also acknowledge what Ms. Moulton said about the concerns about the nets and stuff that are coming out. What I would love and maybe there is something out there where we could do a test run next summer with temporary lines. It's probably not gonna be fantastic. Maybe there's ripable, but if you're gonna put up nets and put away nets, maybe you put down and put away lines too when you use it. And then when they're not being used, it's not confusing for anybody. I don't, I don't think that you've done any bad work. I just don't feel like there's buy-in from anybody very strongly.
All right. I'll go to Ms. Cleland McGrath and then, uh, some experts, more experts than the two-time pickleball player on a tennis court. That would be me. Ms. Cleland McGrath.
So I guess my one question is, is there, is there a reason why you're not, or the, this design doesn't line up and kind of clean up those two intersections, the service line? So if like, if we just moved it, so the service line kind of tee from the tennis court lined up to the, I don't know what the other court line is, like, that might make it a little easier? Is there a reason why they're?
I, I think it has to do with the space they want behind them to play.
Is, do they need it for the, okay.
Again, I, I have played pickleball half as much as the mayor, so, um, I'm not the expert you want, but that was, that was my understanding.
I don't know, so I just wanted to ask. Maybe, maybe one of the public comments will answer that.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna get to that. And, uh, Mr. Tesler, were you gonna come up here and, or, oh, okay, our, Mr. Pope, okay. All right. Um, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna compare how many volleys everybody has and I've got about eight. So, all right. Please state your name and city you live in. Thank you.
Yes, uh, I'm John Pope, uh, 4001, Peters Lane. I have, uh, been lucky throughout my life to run into new sports at just the right time. Mountain biking when I moved to this town and of course trail running and other activities that are related to trail activities that you've heard from me from before. At about the same time, pickleball started at Mount Erie. I have been playing at Mount Erie on school courts, on multi-line systems from the days when we taped green tape down to currently where it's painted into the court. And there've been a whole lot of served people, including past president of, uh, Skagit Valley College, including all the Rutz family. That means most of the best tennis players that have played in this town started out playing at Mount Erie. So I think what it attest, is a testament to is that incubator, just a school gym used for multiple sports is not unlike the ACFL. It's not unlike any system where a municipality is able to understand, we got a need, let's share. Rather than we have a need, let's exclude. That's the difference between, I think, Northwest Ethic in California. Less lawyers maybe? I don't know. Sorry, anybody with a JD. But we get along. In this town, I've seen people on, rollerblades on Mount Erie Road. You know, people do things here and just have fun. Uh, so on the technical side, um, excuse me. Uh, I was also involved in the painting the first time before we knew that there were gonna be, you know, noises, houses too close, et cetera. Again, a volunteer. Uh, so I've seen the courts. What you can basically expect is that you can get, uh, well, two things. Pickleball is an entry-level sport for tennis. Kids this big cannot swing a junior tennis racket worth a darn. They, we have a crop of sixth graders that are gonna be great. And they're right now, every Sunday play, playing at our Mount Erie gym. So it's kind of cool. Kind of inspiring to see that the kids, you know, they know how to do it. They know how to share. They know playgrounds are noisy and they get on with life. So I, I guess I'd leave that with you. The techniques, uh, the four courts for two means, especially since it's more of a double sport, means you get a lot of people for very little real estate. So it's, you know, maybe it's a 50-year thing, but it's certainly something we can address and, and we should be able to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the input.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
What's the funding source for this arrangement?
REIT.
REIT, okay. Um, thanks for your, uh, work analyzing some of the sound levels. I feel actually quite a bit better about this project as a result of your, uh, measurement in the 60s at that nearest house. I feel quite a bit worse about the Clear Ridge Courts, uh, based on your measurement of nine, high 90s. That, that actually strikes me as very not good, um, especially because as I understand it, for every 10 decibel, um, increase, it's, it's, it's not a linear scale. for every ten decibel increase, it's, it's, it's not a linear scale.
Right, just to clarify, yeah, right, it's exponential. So, the, the ninety was on the basketball courts where it was unprotected, right?
Right.
And then, when I went out where it was protected with the aqua block, it was between, I mean, aqua block, pickle block, it was seventy-five to, to the, to the sixty. So, it had done its job, but it was still higher than, you know, than our, than what we would like it to be.
Yeah. So, my, so setting aside Clear Ridge for the moment, but I am sensitive to the tennis concern about concentration. Seems though to me that when competitive tennis is being played, they'll probably be using all six courts.
That would be my expectation.
And when recreational tennis is being played, they're generally not using all six courts?
I mean, they could, you could have tennis players playing there as well, because of the dual purpose, but.
Well, I, I guess my, my first question is, there's, is there six courts of simultaneous tennis playing demand?
I do not know that.
My, my sense is no, but maybe, maybe somebody can inform us that after tonight. But if that's the case, could the hours of tennis playing and pickleball be segregated?
Like I said, a lot of things could happen through public discussion as far as like hours at Clear Ridge, hours here, you could have a lot of those discussions.
Well, you know, setting aside Clear Ridge. But for, for this arrangement here, I guess what I'm left with is, maybe this could work. I mean, it would reduce the number of tennis courts that aren't complicated with lines, and maybe that works out with the more lines, or maybe it doesn't for some people. But for the recreational tennis players, maybe there's still sufficient courts. And if you can deal with the lines, maybe there's sufficient courts for the competitive tennis, which assumedly is played all at once. But, how do we manage that? Because if we do get noise complaints, or we do get user group conflicts, who's going to be in charge of managing it? It's kind of sounds like through this arrangement, nobody will be in charge of that.
So.
And that, that's my, that's my remaining concern.
Sure.
And I, I absolutely do not want to spell out those details in the, in our local agreement. But, I mean, maybe to Councilmember Hubick's point, I kind of don't want to be having to have this discussion at all. But we do get these complaints that come directly to us.
Right.
Especially at Clear Ridge because of how intense that, that noise is. So, is there some arrangement that could be added on to this inter-local agreement that specifies how this could be managed, how it could be worked out for the recreational play when the school district's not using it?
So, we've had those discussions with the district. And what we would do is we would do what we did at Clear Ridge and work with our partners at the Parks Foundation to find solutions to dealing with the noise first. That would be something that the city would do with the district. And then, we'd leave the district issues for their competitive programs, right? If they had issues that, they came to us, said, we want you to do, reduce hours at this time, then we would certainly work with them and do our best to enforce.
Is, so is that reflected in the, in the draft?
It is not, no, those were discussions that came after the fact.
Yeah, my, my inclination is that if, if somebody were listed as responsible and accountable for that, one party or the other, for managing the, the off-hour recreational use, then, then we would know who could, who could get there, who to, the neighbors would know who to call, the tennis players would know who to call, and we could see if we worked that out. That, that's all I've got at this point. I think otherwise, I feel like it, it could, it seems like it could be made compatible, but that's premised on a number of assumptions that I would invite correction.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
I, I, this is my last shot at this. I really do believe that all concerns are being addressed. For me, the fundamental question is, given we're in the time now of having so little resources that we're trying to maximize for the public's use, that use of the current facilities, which is really near my house, is not maximized. We have a facility that's not truly being used to its maximum ability. And then, we have a provision in this agreement that allows for the school, whether it's competitions, to have deference, to have priority. And so, and we have a sport that is roaring here in Anacortes. You know, people above fifty, or whatever the age group did channelize, are hankering for places to go. And so, you know, as much as I think, and, you know, I'm, I'm a tennis fan, you know, I grew up watching Serena, Venus, as well as all of the others, and love them. But we have an opportunity here, and I think that if we don't allow the sport to be, have a place at this price point, thinking that we're going to somehow find the money later to create another space, whether that's indoors or wherever it is, it's just not going to happen. And, and so, you know, for me, the biggest question was, would it impede the students? And the answer to that, I've heard, is no. And do we have a facility where it's a great use of money to help a growing sport? The answer to that is yes. The decimal level, which is the fear that we're having, is of if there's enough noise to create a problem for the neighbors. Well, you know, John's already met with the labors, the decimal level is very low, it's on a slope, it's down. And then, even if it was a problem that we discovered later, it doesn't prevent us from trying to rectify that problem. So, for me, although I respect that when competition, tennis competitions, the priorities are there, yes. But that's built into the agreement. So, when they're not being used, we're saying that we don't want to use them for another growing sport, that there's a high demand for, and we don't have space for. I struggle with that. It doesn't stop us from, if we discover that there's a problem, us finding a solution. And if the fear is that this is a growing sport, that more and more tennis courts, sorry, I'm going to bring it up, more and more tennis courts are going to be consumed, I think it's a wonderful problem if we don't have the demand for tennis. I'm just saying, we can look so far down the line and try to mitigate problems. Yes, I think it's a great idea, but it doesn't solve the immediate thing in front of us right now. I hear the football games, I hear all of the other stuff that's happening, music in the, in my house, in my backyard. It's part of living in this beautiful community that we do, small-town USA. It really is. So, I, I'm, I'm just not seeing the use of, of spot that's not fully being used and giving deference to the people that they were designed for. I, I don't know how we lose on that, especially at this price point in money. So, you know, thinking that we're going to solve this problem later on, that's a lot more money, and we have the demand now. So, I've sent my piece.
Okay, so, we've been talking about this subject for almost an hour, which is, I appreciate Ms. Hubick's point about this is, this is not the worst problem to have in a city, to talk about this. So, I need to get some direction from council, perhaps, and, and is this a, yeah, I, I'm reluctant to take public comment at this point, because council, I, I want council to kind of make, unless we have some really urgent, urgent point to bring up, when, urgent point that is pertaining to the decision on the inter-local. And by the way, the inter-local is only, if council authorizes, only authorizes me to sign this, and then it will still go to the school district for signature. So, and then, there'll still be a contract potentially for an overlay. So, there's a lot more discussion. So, I kind of want to get the feel from council, do you really want to make a decision tonight? Or do you really want to think about it a, a little bit longer? And if you really wanted to make a decision tonight, then sure, I'll bring, bring a couple more folks up to, to talk about it. But I think, I feel like you've got enough information. I realize it's a hard decision, but it's not the worst hard decision to have to make as a council. Mr. Fantini, sorry.
I'm not ready to make a decision tonight, that, and I'll keep this brief, however rare that is for me. I, I, I don't, normally when we have an inter-local, there's somebody here from the other side to kind of represent that, and to give a little bit more background and buy-in to Ms. Cleland McGrath's point. And I kind of would like that. I also feel like the community, once we make this decision, we can't go back. And so, for me to kind of say yes, I think if we are going to increase the amount of courts that are for use, that does provide us an opportunity at the same moment to make an adjustment to the use of the Clear Ridge Courts. So, you know, because it's a, a whole group thing. So, I would kind of like to see, to see that.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
I don't have any great need to make a decision tonight. I suggest we move on to other agenda items, invite any public comment to be submitted in writing, and bring this back up in a couple weeks.
Thank you, I appreciate that input. That's kind of exactly what I was looking for. So, those folks that you're desperately, you know, that, that's your time to engage with your council members. Send the email, send me the email, I'll make sure it gets to the council, so they can make this decision with, without haste. So, unless there's objection, we'll move this to a future agenda item, a future council meeting. Thank you, Mr. Lowndes, appreciate it. And thanks, everybody, for the discussion, it was great. Okay, next item is six B, this is a contract award, downtown streetscape's plan, streetscape's plan. This is a discussion item with possible action. And Mr. Rayum, because the city attorney's not here, and I did have somebody who wanted to comment. I'm, I'm always reluctant to have somebody comment on a contract, so I'll have them go first, and then let council discuss if that's, seems all right.
You want me to step aside?
Yeah, so, Mr. McKenzie, come on up to, because. Because then it's on council to determine the, the details of the contract, and my city attorney will remind me of that, but she's not here.
I understand it's late, and I'm not talking contracts tonight.
All right.
I'll keep this brief.
Name for the record, please.
So, I'm Ward McKenzie, board chair for the Downtown Anacortes Alliance. Our executive director, and some of our board members and volunteers are in the audience. And we're here really to thank the mayor and council for supporting the downtown streetscape plan. When DAA was formed in 2021, our organization was guided by the community-validated Anacortes Comprehensive Plan of 2016. Our main goal was to help make the comprehensive plan vision for downtown a reality by identifying programs and projects to enhance the downtown experience. We believe this contract will really help achieve that goal and guide effective use of the community's resources and funding to cultivate a vibrant, thriving downtown district for the benefit of all. Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Okay, Mr. Rayum.
Mayor and council, before you, for your consideration is a contract in the amount of one hundred twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and eighty-four dollars, with first forty feet LLC, to develop a downtown streetscape, that's a tough word, plan for the segment of Commercial Avenue from Eleventh to the waterfront. In the 2025 capital facilities plan, this project was identified with a budget of eighty thousand. City staff solicited proposals from firms familiar with development of this type of planning effort. First forty feet was selected from seven different proposals. If this contract is approved and executed, it's important to note that we will need an additional forty-five thousand in the 2026 capital facilities plan to cover the costs. The consultant is aware of this budget constraint, and is planning to stay within eighty thousand budget, and eighty thousand dollar budget in 2025, and complete the project in 2026. The deliverables for the project are identified in the contract and the scope, budget, and schedule. It was noted during the development of this scope that the goal of this planning effort will be realistic, short and long-term improvements we can make as a community to continue the historic charm of the corridor while making the corridor more attract, more attractive, and draw in more patrons. That was it.
All right, hopefully you all have had a chance to take a look at the contract. Any questions for Mr. Rayum?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini.
Not a lot of questions, I just, I'm very excited about this. This is a very opportunity to get a really comprehensive vision for the downtown area. It aligns with our 2016 comprehensive plan goals, which is great. Streetscape enhancements, pedestrian and bike safety. But I think what is really kind of key to this is economic revitalization. Coming up with strategies to like, use some of our unused spaces, boost our foot traffic, support our small businesses. Also, I liked a lot that it keeps our historic character. There's a provision in there to really focus, and, you know, our downtown area is quite historic, to make sure that we, we hold that, and that that's a priority as well. And again, those community spaces, identifying locations for little pocket parks, hosting events, for everybody that is curious, because anytime we're going to change things downtown, or improve things downtown, I liked that there was a very big, community-driven process where there's going to be some public meetings, some interim sessions. I just, I'm very excited about this, so I'm anxious to support it.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Hubick.
Thank you. Are they going to be using any of the documents that you and your team have already prepared, or have had done, like, there was a bunch of work around EDAs, and the work that's been done to kind of note where improvements need to be made? Are they going to just have access to that? Is that something they can easily use?
Yeah, absolutely. So, both of those are approved by council, so the ADA transition plan, as well as the safety action plan, those are two things they've already looked at as a consultant team, just to build out their scope. I think you had a two-point-eight million dollar project in the safety action plan. We don't have it scoped in the six-year CFP, but that was just for four intersections along this piece of the corridor, Commercial Avenue. That does address quite a few of the ADA ramp problems as well. I think there's sixteen ADA ramps involved with that. So, there's probably more in the safe, the ADA transition plan, but the safety action plan specifically has a project that's like two-point-eight million to, to bring everything up for pedestrian and bicycle safety in the corridor.
And then, just one other quick little question, more of an observation. I don't know if they can contract with a botanist, or an arborist, or something, but it would be fantastic if they have plans to put trees down, that there are trees that are meant for the Pacific Northwest, and there are trees that aren't going to tear up the sidewalks. It's one of the things that I've noticed when I'm in like any pedestrian-friendly place. It's, they're pretty, and like, depending on what kind of sidewalk you're in, it can be either just a hot mess to try to update that pedestrian walkway. It's easier if it's brick, or if it's some kind of mobile versus like a big cement thing. So, that's just something that I, I really, really want to stress, and I want to make sure that we have like climate-friendly people that are going to recognize that work, what's working now is probably not going to work in twenty-five, thirty-five years. So, just, just a request.
Yeah, I think the, the public works industry has learned that lesson the hard way. We, I've seen redwoods planted in, yeah, so.
So, it's your fault for that tree twenty-five years ago?
Yeah, I didn't, that wasn't me, but we fixed it, yeah.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
I'm in strong support of this planning effort for our downtown. I think we have seen some big investments by businesses in our downtown in about the last six years. There could be a number of explanations for that, but I feel like one possible explanation is that there was a certain level of excitement that was generated by the 2016 comprehensive planning effort, and then the continuation of that effort into the 2019 development regulations. There, there really was a lot of energy around that process, and about talking about what we could do, not just with downtown, but with the city generally. There's obviously a real opportunity here to leverage the work by the Downtown Alliance, which is, is generating a level of excitement in the downtown that we have really not seen in decades. And the level of engagement with the downtown, I think, similarly, we haven't seen in decades. This contract does the outreach, it brings ideas from elsewhere, which I think is key, generates a plan, and then identifies funding options. So, it's a, a bit of an improvement over some prior efforts that we've had. You know, our doubt, our south commercial corridor plan didn't, it wasn't related to any amount of money that we could reasonably obtain to do the work. Here, I think there are inexpensive measures, we could be talking about benches, parklets, the street tree measures, which is money we are incurring, costs we are incurring now every time we rip, have to rip out a tree, and then put one back. So, if we could do that better, we could potentially save some money. We've talked about revisions to parking downtown with just signs and paint that could add up to a hundred spaces at almost no cost. If you look at the contract, it's pretty boring. If you look at the responses to the request for proposals that we put out, there's a lot. If you look at the responses to the request for proposals that we put out, there's a lot of excitement in the documents that were submitted by the applicants or by the respondents. And I think you can see some great examples of, of some of their work that I, I think are quite a bit more exciting and probably would be more convincing of the value of this contract. But really, I don't think we can go wrong investing in our community and our downtown. And the solution to our, our ongoing or future long-term financial problems is to grow the economy, to generate more economic activity, generate more sales tax, generate more activity downtown. So I'm very pleased that we are pursuing this. The price is not what I wanted it to be or what we expected it to be, but I think overall it's still a good value for the city.
All right. Anybody else? Any other questions?
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. Councilmember Fantini and Councilmember Walters bring up some excellent points, and the Downtown Alliance has, has really generated a lot of enthusiasm and just keeps building on that, and I applaud that because we do need that. I'm very much excited about that myself. I am concerned about the cost of the contract. We're spending a lot of our REIT money and, you know, $45,000 next year, and we do have a, a history of coming up with plans that then we don't have the wherewithal to do. So I'm not entirely certain about where the funding is going to, going to come from. I think there will be a lot of good, great ideas generated from this, and it would be an excellent process and very worthwhile. I'm just concerned with budget constraints that we're facing right now. I know $125,000 is, you know, not a huge amount, but then what comes next? What kind of funding will be required to put, bring this to fruition? Because we have plans that, that a lot of people have spent a lot of time and energy on that are languishing. I mean, South Commercial is maybe not the best example, but the Hart Lake Master Plan or the Depot Master Plan, we have these plans, we're great at planning, but we're not always great at executing. And I think the Downtown Alliance and the volunteers and the energy, again, and the business owners and economic development, that is, that will all catalyze and energize people, but I, I still am concerned about the very real costs that are, are going to be down the road from this, in this scary time of budget crunching and not maybe even being able to meet the requirements we already have. So I just want to put that out there as a concern.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
I agree with Ms. Moulton. You know, I, again, not to laud the Downtown Development Group, they've done a spectacular job from, you know, just really, the inertia is very clear. For me, this contract at $125,000, you know, it really is a look, see, and come up with some ideas. We still haven't figured out if there's money to sort of develop those ideas. I personally think that given we don't have, it's really, we're really just going to come up with some ideas that we can move forward with at $125,000. I just think that it's timing now, given the budget where we are right now, and if there are ideas that we can help the business owners of downtown move forward, you know, we're open to those things. But I just think that right now where we are, I, I just think it's a lot of money for ideas and, and that we're not going to be able to implement immediately. I, I just don't think that we have the funds for that. However, what I'm interested in is possibly hearing ideas from whether it's the Downtown Association members, businesses, about what could be done downtown, what can we do in the short term? That, for me, the time value of money between allocating $125,000 toward having meetings and flushing out what needs to happen and execution is a big gulf. And I just not, I just don't feel that the city is financially in a place right now, and that is my concern. I would love that if we had, you know, cash coming in, sales ramping up, but I just don't believe that this answer that we'll get, these answers we'll get for $125,000 will be immediate such that we can address the issues that are facing all cities everywhere, the economic downturn, and then uniquely, how does that apply to Anacortes and encourage those businesses that are downtown to be the best that they can be? I'm just not sure that that's what can take place. I think that the time value of this money could be better used in a shorter term by going directly to the association and the businesses and say, tell us, what are some of the things that you're looking forward to that we can do to help you downtown? I, I'm, I'm just not convinced that we're going to get what we're hoping out of this. And like Ms. Moulton, I think we've got a number of plans, South Commercial Corridor and others that still need help. And so anyway, I'm, that's my only concern, not about anything to do with trying to make sure downtown is successful. That matters to me, making sure that the association works, that matters to me. But right now, just where we are budgetary-wise, I just think we need to be more conservative because this doesn't give us, it only identifies certain things. It doesn't give us a plan. We still have to find the money to do whatever plans or whatever things that comes out of it.
All right.
Mayor Miller.
Anybody else? Mr. McDougal.
I want to thank my, my colleagues, Mr. Young, Ms. Moulton, their points are very well taken. I'm tend to, or I'm inclined to support this one mostly as like, you know, I definitely will take the point about lack of execution. I think that has tended to be projects that don't have an economic development driver behind them and more of a quality of life driver behind them. And our, kind of our key problem right now is, is actually economic development. So that's why I'm kind of in support of this one, and I would hope that we would find a way to execute, but again, point is very well taken. Thank you.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Cleo McGrath, I have not heard from her, so I'll come to you next. Ms. Cleo McGrath.
Thank you. The price tag is a little shocking, so that's difficult to stomach, but the more, hearing council discuss it on the dais, going to the deliverables, I think that we have seen a really amazing improvement for downtown core since COVID happened. And I think a lot of that has to do with the energy of the 2016 comp plan and the Downtown Alliance. And they've done a lot of projects that are, that are doable, manageable, and have shown improvements, right? As simple as the replacing of the flowers with the, with the cool signs that said under construction, with the way they've reinterpreted some of the parklets. You know, we, we've seen a kind of a ground swell. We've also seen a number of property owners do some really great work, watching the plat building kind of do some of those details with fresh paint, and then the three businesses that have kind of moved into the commercial area with the Adirondack chairs and the dog stuff and kind of interesting things happening. I think that we are on the right path and we have the energy and we need to utilize, we need to take advantage of that and go this direction. Because what we're not seeing, which we've been talking about since 2016 or earlier, is how do we get larger developments to happen? How do we get retail space on the ground floor and then residential space above? How do we address the fear of running out of parking, which I don't think we have a problem? We've had some designs about doing some angled parking, one-way directions, which hopefully that'll get funneled into this project. But I think we need that master plan so that there is some vision. That being said, that master plan needs to, we need the deliverables that make sense for Anacortes, not what the consultant likes to have because they do it for all the communities. So that, I think, is going to fall on the stakeholders that are at those meetings and also staff to say, hey, we need to have plans that we can do a year out at $10,000 investment, $50,000 investment, but also, and I don't mean to go back to the Housing Action Plan, but I think that that had, hey, here's these like low-hanging fruit options, here's the things that are going to take a lot more work, and here's like high in the sky. But we've got to have some kind of plan and be able to show community members, investors, folks in the room that like, we want to see this, we're going to work with you, here's what we're going to do, here's like our vision, so that when they're thinking about building or remodeling, that they know that we've got a cohesive viewpoint. So that being said, as long as falls on staff to kind of keep that in check and then stakeholders like the Downtown Alliance, the Chamber, the Creative District, to kind of make sure that we are tailoring that final product for Anacortes, which is going to fall on us. So, and all of us in the room. So that being said, I would like to see this move forward because I think that that's what our community needs as the next step.
That almost sounded like a motion, since every council member has spoken on this subject. Anybody want to make a motion?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walt, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Fantini asked to speak, and then Mr. Walters.
I will also make a motion, but just to also quickly mention, in the deliverables, it does say that part of the, one of the deliverables, and it's reiterated twice, is to identify opportunities for state and federal grant funding, which I think is, you know, I wasn't here for the downtown, the Southern Downtown Planner, you know, but I haven't seen that. That's not something that you've, that I've frequently seen in plans that, that come forward. So that kind of gives me some, some hope too. But I will make a motion that the city council authorized the mayor to sign contract 25075 IDS 001 with first forty feet LLC in the amount of $124,884 to perform the downtown streetscapes plan.
Second.
Motion by? Motion by Mr. Fantini, a second by Ms. Hubick, to approve the contract as presented. Any additional discussion?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
I think the, the point about the cost is well taken, and I reiterate that it's a little higher than I, I thought it would be and that I expect that we could probably achieve this for, but it sort of is what it is, and we did arrive here through a competitive process whereby we had quite a few applications that were judged by staff. This was the second least expensive one and the best one in staff's judgment. But compare it to what we could be spending the money on. We approved some weeks ago a traffic safety action plan, and it included for downtown one or two HAWK signals, the pedestrian-activated beacons, which if you've seen one of those, I feel confident in saying you do not want in the downtown. But we, we have it in the plan, and it's one way to address pedestrian safety in the downtown. Those range, according to Copilot, from 80 to $150,000 each. So they're quite expensive, much more expensive than this planning exercise, and potentially through this planning exercise, we can get techniques, low-cost measures, and, and other things that could, that are much more compatible with the character of our downtown, hopefully are less expensive overall. And I'm hopeful head off some of these other things that we, you know, they fit the, they fit the bill, they check the box, but they may not really be what we want to do. So I, I, I think that that, that really enhances the value for us to go through this visioning exercise, to rule out some things like that, rule in other low-cost measures will be money well spent. I'm a planner, we got a couple planners here in the room. I definitely believe in planning, but that's one of the reasons why. It should allow us to make better decisions going forward and save money.
Okay, still have a motion by Mr. Fantini and a second by Ms. Hubick to approve the contract. Any additional discussion? Mr. Franciac, vote please.
Mr. Young.
No.
Mr. Walters, yes. Ms. Cleo McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Mr. McDougal.
Yes.
Ms. Hubick.
Yes.
Mr. Fantini.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you very much, and I'd like to thank the Downtown Anacortes Alliance. You've been a great partner with the city. I know we've met many times over the past couple of years and appreciate all the work that you do and your continued partnership. So thank you, and thank you for sticking it out tonight. Okay, next up is item 6C. It's an interlocal agreement with the Swinomish Indian Tribal Community for mutual assistance. This is a discussion item with possible action. Mr. Rayum.
I'll try to make, try to make this quick. Before you is an interlocal agreement with the Swinomish Indian Tribal Community to provide public works assistance to each other in the event of such support as needed. Public Works has a variety of staff skillsets, equipment, and parts readily available in the event of an emergency. As your Public Works Director, I have tried to communicate with other neighboring jurisdictions at the staff level to make sure we, we could call on each other in, in a time of need. Although informally, we would take action to support each other, it's always helpful to have the legislative bodies confer on us supporting each other contractually. Recouping costs is not always front of mind during an incident. Having a contractual ability to recoup costs is a best practice, though, among cities and tribal communities, so that's it.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Is this agreement basically identical to the similar agreement we have with the port? Same terms?
And Melbourne and, and Workwood-on-Wan with Oak Harbor. I try to get one with everybody because if you need a part, you need a part, and you don't know who has it.
Yeah, okay. What work are we currently anticipating, if any?
We're not, I think one example that happened, that a fishing boat gets stuck on, potentially stuck on our pipe that lays on the channel, the, yeah, so stuff like that where we'll come out and then if it really got serious, that'd be a serious expense that we wouldn't just be like, oh, that's too bad, what are you guys going to do to fix that? We'd, we'd be rolling up the sleeves and getting in there and helping fix it, so.
Okay. I, I move we authorize the mayor to sign the interlocal as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Walters, a second by Mr. Young to approve the interlocal as presented. Any additional discussion? Mr. Franciac, vote please.
Mr. Walters, yes. Ms. Cleo McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Mr. McDougal.
Yes.
Ms. Hubick.
Yes.
Mr. Fantini.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. No further business before the council. I'll adjourn tonight's meeting. Have a great night.